Winn, Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sepherdin.
Here.
Councilmember Ravel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
I'm present today.
Mayor Bis.
Here, we have a quorum president prepared to do our work. First item on our agenda is my public announcements, of which there are none. The next item on our agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Clerk Mendoza, just very briefly, I wanted to say thank you so much to the city staff who helped us on the Fourth of July celebration, particularly the July Fourth Association as well, but also police, fire, public works, parks and rec, administrative services, and other city staff throughout the organization who did an excellent job of planning and executing a safe and fun Fourth of July celebration, both parade, fireworks, and other festivities that day. So, thank you so much to city staff for that. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll and then jump in with any communications?
I just want to acknowledge emails from Chuck Weisberg. He emailed about Climate Action Evanston. PJ Trulli as well. Sue Lollbeck, who I understand is making a public comment, so I'll have her read her public comment. Corinne emailing the city council about a Chicago Tribune article, July 9th. And Abby, whose last name is not here, against the proposed zoning changes. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This now brings us to public comment. This evening, we have quite a few people, nearly 30, and so everyone participating in a public comment this evening will be given a minute and 40 seconds. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this sheet to speak in person, beginning with Jean Breslin, followed by Paul Breslin, and then Bonnie Wilson.
These comments were developed with the help of Bob Froscher, who can be here tonight. We have a brief comment about the proposed legacy project at 1621 to 31 Chicago Avenue. It is clear from the minutes of the June 26th city council meeting that the motion to approve the legacy ordinance was never seconded, never considered, never discussed. In the call of the wards, a motion was made to consider, it got a second, the motion to table until September 26th failed. The motion subsequently was withdrawn. It was disposed of. There is no basis for this specific proposed project, ordinance 60023, to come up again in the city council. If the developer wants to make a new proposal, they are welcome to do so. We would hope that they take input from the key members of the community, and in particular, the members of the surrounding residential community and the First United Methodist Church before doing so. Separately, while we see this project is not on the agenda for this evening, we do have some concern about the initial effort to put this specific project on the city council agenda again for this evening or for any other upcoming meeting. We are confused as to the basis for so doing and would encourage the city council to follow good and transparent process in this manner, in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who will be followed by Bonnie Wilson, and then Winn Graham.
My comments are very much in the same vein as my wife's. It seems to me that after the LUC voted against this project five to four, and Planning and Development voted against it five to one, and the motion to table failed, that there is no basis for sending this back to city council. And again, if the developer wants to revise the project and take into account the criticisms made by those who voted against the proposal and bring it back, that's fine, but it has to go through the whole approval process with public comment. Again, otherwise, it will look to us, the residents, as if we have been railroaded, and that's my concern.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bonnie Wilson, who will be followed by Winn Graham, and then Jeffrey Beshear.
Hi, I'm, thank you, Mayor, and city clerk, and the council members. I am Bonnie Wilson. I am Bonnie Wilson. I work in Evanston, and one of the biggest challenges in selling real estate in Evanston over the last 38 years have been in the rental market. Right now, in the Ed Brad Listing Service, the lowest rent for a one-bedroom is $1,450. Two-bedrooms is $1,500, and a three-bedroom is $1,850. The rents at this development in Church and Darrow are going to be, one-bedroom will be $600, two-bedrooms will be $800, and a three-bedroom will be $1,000. This means that a tenant making less than $40,000 a year can now afford to live in Evanston. This afternoon, I was at a Connections event with Congressman Jan Schakowsky. Jan was angry because she said, "In this country, the richest country in the world, no one should be homeless, and everyone should be able to live in their own affordable apartment in Evanston." With this development, 33 more households, from the young families starting out in the workforce, to seniors living on social security, should be able to live in Evanston without a struggle. Now, close to half of Evanston's residential, more than 30% of any other, of their, now close to half of Evanston residents, more than 30%, other than their income, and those with the lowest income are struggling the most to meet their basic necessities. I do not want to wait, wait one more day, one more month, one more year, to have affordable housing in Evanston for my tenant clients. The time is now to say yes to this affordable housing development at Church and Darrow. I'm going to pass out the two comparing the renters today and what Church and Darrow are going to be charging for their rent.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Winn Graham, who will be followed by Jeffrey Beshear, and then Tina Payton.
That's okay. No, I support very much what Bonnie, the information she brought forward, because she's in a position to do that, and I support that. I'd like to address the council's goal of expanding affordable housing options. My experience comes from 35 years as a resident of Evanston, being a member of Lake Street Church Peace and Justice Committee, Interfaith Actions Advocacy Committee, and Joining Forces. I urge you to approve the postponed subdivision and sale of property for the HODC project on Church Street and to proceed with this development immediately. As volunteer for overnights organized by Interfaith Action and observing the creation of Hilda's Place at Lake Street Church, I understand the importance of providing safe housing for those with limited means. Concerns about situations in rental buildings should be appropriately addressed by the city, but not obstruct a project that provides affordable housing. Every delay in postponement contributes to the high cost of building affordable housing. I support joining forces for expediting the building of affordable housing, especially for one with housing for families. Let's fulfill this stated goals for providing affordable housing for Evanston as a priority for our city with actions that make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeffrey Beshear, who will be followed by Tina Payton, and then
Good evening, Mayor Bis, council members and staff. My name is Jeffrey Beshear. I live at 318 Dempster in the Third Ward and across the street from the claretge at 319 Dempster. My comments tonight will be regarding HODC and both items P3 and P4. But first, with the new ward boundary lines in effect, I would like to welcome Councilmember Jonathan Newsma to the claretge neighborhood. I look forward to working with him on stopping the drug dealing on Judson Avenue in his Fourth Ward. HODC has told us the removal of one problem tenant will improve the living conditions at the claretge. That problem tenant was removed today. Some of the neighbors have doubts that living conditions will improve. For example, the current security watch at the claretge goes on duty every day from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Yesterday, Sunday, July 9, at 2:00 PM, a Judson Avenue neighbor witnessed a drug deal in the alley north of the claretge. She said the dealer working the alley was new, not the problem tenant. On January 7, 2022, we had a Zoom meeting with Richard Conig, Claire Kelly, Melissa Wynn, Sarah Flax, Jill Callian, and myself to discuss the problems and possible solutions to improve the living conditions at the claretge. Richard said he was aware of the problems and he was working to solve the issues. He said he could not tell us what he was doing, but things would be getting better in a few months. Things did not get better. How is it that HODC can operate their other housing facilities and not have the problems that they inflict on the tenants and the neighbors of the claretge? Before Evanston makes a real estate gift to HODC tonight, I urge the council members to table or vote no on agenda items P3, P4, until we have received a written agreement with HODC for the safety improvements necessary at the claretge. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payton, who will be followed by Catherine Lot, and then Jill Callian.
Black Lives Matter Way is an honorary street name for Dodge Avenue. What does the name actually mean? Is it just another sign on the parkway? I was at a meeting, and a white resident told me to shut up. Apparently, I was asking way too many questions at a public meeting. I guess he was telling me to get out of the way, because I didn't agree with him. I was at another meeting where it was okay for everyone to talk about black and brown people, but when I mentioned white and Chinese people, suddenly, I'm a racist. I guess I was speaking the wrong way. By the way, I was at a meeting today where I saw some of you, and Connections received $2 million, and construction is underway for their improvements at services at Hilda's Place. Anytime I ask for help from the City of Evanston, where I provide important services, I'm told no way. Basically, there is not an easy way, which to say that in every way, the city will always look the other way when I'm asking to be treated the same way as people, all the non-for-profits and big developers. And help for me will never be on the way. I guess that's the way the ball bounces, or the way the cookie crumbles. I'll have to go to Burger King, because they're the only ones that say that I can have it my way. I'm on my way, because you'll tell me that my time is way over. My last question to you, does black lives really matter anyway? Vote no for P3 and 4.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Catherine Lot, who will be followed by Jill Callian, and then John Hammerslog.
Hi, thanks for listening. I'm Katie Lot. I'm in favor of the tree ordinance. I think it's way overdue. I'm on the board of Climate Action Evanston, formerly Citizens Greener Evanston. I'm a steward at Lovelace Park, and I'm a co-lead for Natural Habitat Evanston. I've read some of the negative comments about the tree ordinance, and I think it's important that we don't get ahead of ourselves, and that we actually implement a tree ordinance and then collect data on the effect that that tree ordinance has, and make sure that it's not affecting affordable housing or putting an undue burden on the poor. You know, every year, Evanston loses about 600 trees and plants about 400 trees, and this 200-tree deficit has been going on for years and years. We have to do everything we can to increase the tree canopy, specifically focusing on redlined areas that are about 5 degrees Fahrenheit hotter than areas that were not formerly redlined. That makes planting trees an environmental justice issue, as well as something that will help with climate change, because as climate change exacerbates, we need more trees to absorb carbon, to increase shade, promote biodiversity, and lower temperatures. Please vote yes on the tree ordinance, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jill Callian, who will be followed by John Hammerslog, and then Albert Gibbs.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Jill Callian, and I would like to respectfully ask the council to postpone transferring the Church and Darrow property to HODC until HODC genuinely and formally commits to making meaningful improvements at the 319 Dempster property. I live at 1246 Forest, which is diagonally across the street from 319 Dempster. My husband and I have lived there for 25 years, and I think that the time that we've lived in our home relates to two points. First, many of our neighbors with concerns about the management at 319 Dempster are like us. They've been in the neighborhood for decades. The neighbors are not people who do not want to live in community with subsidized or supported housing. We are people who have lived down the block, across the street, down the alley from this housing for many years. Many of us were here when 319 was an SRO, and when it was taken over by HODC, and when HODC began renting homes to, or renting the rooms to insecure, to persons who are housing insecure. This is not about neighbors trying to oust subsidized housing or to limit low-income housing in Evanston. It's about neighbors caring for neighbors. And when I say caring, what I mean is it's that we're concerned not just with providing people an address or a little roof over their heads, but also with being concerned with them having a place to live that offers a basic level of emotional and physical safety, a place that affords some dignity and opportunity for the tenants, and a chance for the tenants and their neighbors to have a peaceful enjoyment of living in the neighborhood. So, I would just urge you to please postpone handing over this additional property to HODC until they have made a better commitment to the neighbors and the tenants at 319 Dempster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Hammerslog, who will be followed by Albert Gibbs, and then Carlos Sutton.
Well, I seem to have lost my sent mail, so I'm going to try to ad lib. I sent an email to each of you on the council and to you, Mayor Bis, and it's in regard to HS1, the proposal to require all, to require all business establishments to accept cash. And I've been in the parking business for over 45 years. All the facilities we own are cashless, and they're cashless for a good reason. Cash in a business creates all kinds of operating obstacles. It's more expensive, much more expensive these days to handle cash. The banks don't even handle cash. The banks have turned over cash handling to armored car services. And it, you know, having cash in business establishments puts both employees and customers at risk. And therefore, I heartily reject the proposal that business establishments go cashless. This is not something that the government should be involved in. It should be left up to the particular business. And I just point out that Newport, Poor, Dollop, the Chocolate Shop on Chicago Avenue are presently cashless. And so, if you require them to have cash on hand, you're seriously affecting their business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Albert Gibbs, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton.
Don't get old. You can't be a punk and get old. Just doesn't work. Too many things are against you. I'm born and raised here in Evanston in 1952, 1816 Dodge. Went to Foster School, kindergarten to sixth grade, went to Skiles, seventh and eighth, went through four years of ETHS, where I seemed to be pretty productive for what those years represented. So, after graduating and on to, you know, college and nightclubs and playing and entertaining and singing, I thought that was doing something constructive. And then you come to learn that there are other people in your community that are in need of help, services, for whatever the reason. Their family may not afford food, may not afford a roof, may not afford shelter. So, instead of you buying drugs, you give them the money. When they are being attacked, instead of you not getting in the way, you stand up in the way for them. I'm sorry, I'll leave. I'm sorry. What do I do?
Just please bring her.
I am here on behalf of my church, Mount Pisgah. We are seeking to get the properties there at Darrow and Foster. We would like to do one of the most productive things humanity can receive, and that is to build a church. Build a church and build senior housing. If this is my town and you say you are for me, vote for it. Don't let us fail.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carlos Sutton.
Good evening, Carlos Sutton, 1821 Darrow Avenue. First, I want to thank the people from 319 Dempster for your concerns about management. Secondly, I want to commend all of those people who've made comments but are not stakeholders in this argument. So, my first request is that you don't have the two-thirds majority vote, which is required to pass P3 and P4. Number one, this is not affordable housing. This is more supportive housing. Number two, it's on contaminated land. How can you sit there and disregard the safety for the residents of Evanston by placing a unit on contaminated soil, designated soil by EPA? Where's the church's feasibility study? And last, but not all, how have you heard, any of you, about a land trust? I think what black people need in this community is ownership, not rental. This does not answer any of our concerns about providing housing for the poor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the list of people who signed up on this sheet to speak. Ordinarily, we would then go to those who signed up online to speak in person. I don't know any way to sugarcoat this. I'm going to be very direct. No one's ever given me any trophies for excellent spreadsheet utilization. That streak continues tonight. I could have sworn there were folks on this spreadsheet who had signed up online to speak in person, but I can't find them. So, help a mayor out. Is there anyone in the audience who would sign up online to speak in person? Well, who's not already spoken, I should say. Seeing none, we'll just pretend, oh, we'll just pretend that never happened, and I'll try to get better at spreadsheets. In that case, we're now prepared to move on to those who signed up online to speak online, of whom there are a number. We'll begin with Michael Mallory, who will be followed by Virginia Ayers, and then Michael Vasilko.
Hello, everyone, and hello, esteemed members of Evanston Leadership and those in attendance at city council tonight. I am Michael Mallory, Chief Government Affairs Officer at Connections for the Homeless, and have been in the field of homelessness services for much of my career as a licensed clinical social worker. Most of my work has involved operating housing programs for homeless individuals and families across Cook County. I come before you tonight to voice my support of HODC and implore city council to approve the sale of land and plat of subdivision for HODC to develop 33 housing units. Communities across the nation are faced with a crisis of scarcity with affordable housing units. Evanston is no different. We all know there are insufficient housing units for the current makeup of the Evanston community. We are in the midst of a growing housing crisis, and without an expeditious process to develop affordable housing, we are perpetuating unsheltered homelessness. We must act now. Please do not continue to delay this process, as doing so will only prolong the opportunity of housing for those who need affordable housing solutions. Remember, saying you are for affordable housing but is actually inaction, which perpetuates disenfranchisement, shame, and discrimination of our neighbors. Just because our neighbors may be or are homeless, living in poverty, living with mental illness, disabilities, or addiction, does not mean that they are less deserving of living in our neighborhoods. Be the council that stops the disenfranchisement, and be the leaders demonstrating to other communities that the vulnerable are welcome neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Virginia Ayers, who will be followed by Michael Vasilko, and then Janila Sladziewski.
I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Interfaith Action of Evanston Advocacy Committee, which works to provide housing for the homeless and those who cannot afford our Evanston rents. I ask you to support the sale of land and funding for the Mount Pisgah subdivision project. Every day at Interfaith Action, we witness the challenges of inadequate affordable housing in Evanston. Each winter, our overnight shelter houses individuals who have jobs but cannot find apartments. In fact, Evanston's census figures show that nearly 9,000 people are living at or below the poverty level, juggling choices between food, rent, and other necessities. We see them in our soup kitchens and in line at the Produce Mobile. The Mount Pisgah subdivision is a solid step toward offering its residents the opportunity to live housed and in dignity. While we share concerns about responsible property management, we believe these issues are best addressed separately. We urge the city council to approve Resiliation 22R23 and Ordinance 51023 tonight, tonight. Please, no more delays. Thank you for your service and commitment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Vasilko, who will be followed by Janila Sladziewski, and then Mary Rosinski.
Thank you very much. At APW, I raised questions about items A6 and A7. For item A6, the conversation was cut short on both items, because under the pressure of time, everything had to be cut short. The staff didn't answer, Alvin, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kelly's question at APW. I believe she asked for staff, not the consultant, but staff, to state which HDRA project is an example of what Evanston is asking for, not a similar project, not a similar kind of project, a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance project similar to what Evanston is asking for. That firm, HDRA, was one point, scored one point higher in the zoning, in the rankings on page 48 of the packet, whereas TESCA, the competitor, who's $50,000 less, scored higher in qualifications, project approach, in their price, because they're lower, they tied in the organizational skills of the proposal, their willingness to execute the agreement, MWEBE was a tie. It was the subjective category where, for some reason, and I think... It was the subjective category where, for some reason, and I think I want to touch on it, apparently, they use the term data visualization, which is kind of the new trendy term, where it used to be, people were innovative a couple of years ago, and Evanston, one of the staff members said, well, we selected a firm that was more innovative, because they said they were more innovative.
Thank you very much.
Basically, I would like somebody to answer Councilmember Kelly's question and reevaluate the selection of this firm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Janila Sladziewski, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Gordon Hazen.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Janila Sladziewski. I'm counsel for Crosby Theodore L L C. Last week, my firm filed a lawsuit against the city of Evanston and multiple other parties to the proposed land sale and swap. We ask that the City Council vote no on agenda items P three and P four, given the pending litigation and all of the reasons raised by my client throughout the public proceedings. In the alternative, we ask that P three and P four be tabled until the litigation is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Gordon Hazen, and then Taft West.
I thank you so much. I'm here to speak about the, also, selection for the comprehensive plan firm. I don't know anyone at Tesca personally, but I was really surprised that they had not been selected. They've done, they're familiar with the communities right around here. They've done, they've worked with Weneka, and I believe other communities in planning, and their portfolio is excellent, and they know Evanston. And I just wish you would reconsider that as a choice. I looked at the websites of all the people who were out there, and I understand that they were all kind of more or less equal, Tesca and the, and the H D R when they went in, and then it came out, and it was one point difference. And I'd really love to know what cities we're emulating when we make a decision to go with not a non-Evanston-based firm. Like I said, I know Tesca has done so much work and good work with many different areas of our city, and our comprehensive plan is our most, it's our most important document. It's our values, and it defines our futures, and I would just love to know what we're, what cities we're emulating. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gordon Hazen, who will be followed by Taft West, and then Sue Lolbach.
Hello, my name is Gordon Hazen. I'm a retired Northwestern professor emeritus who has lived in Evanston for forty years. While I support affordable housing, like many here, I oppose approval of a H O D C church and Darrow items on the docket tonight, until Evanston secures a written commitment from H O D C for suitable round-the-clock building supervision to deal with drug dealing issues at the claret, three nineteen Dempster. I know one of the building residents, Craig Williams, who has told me of the suspicions of drug dealing resulting fires from, from cooking drugs, even a dead body that was allowed to sit for three weeks in spite of his report of the smell. Conditions are poor enough that Craig prefers to remove from the building at night for his peace of mind. I've heard that the H O D, H O D C president has allowed, alleged that Craig is nothing but a tool of the older person, Clerk Kelly. This is, of course, an outrageous statement. Craig is an intelligent, articulate, drug- and alcohol-free individual who should be listened to along with other residents of the claret. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Taft West, who will be followed by Sue Lolbach. Is Taft West in the Zoom? Looks like no. In that case, the next speaker will be Sue Lolbach.
Good evening. I'm Sue Lolbach. I work at Connections for the Homeless and head up a coalition called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. We are very happy to see the City Council treating affordable housing as a priority, both with the zoning code changes being introduced in P two, which will streamline certain processes, and with the hoped-for full approval tonight of P two and P three, the sale of land and plat of subdivision for the H O D C development. We urge immediate approval of the H O D C transactions so that this development can move forward as soon as possible. The needs at the Dempster Building are a separate issue from the creation of new affordable units. We ask that the Dempster Building not be allowed to block progress on the new building, but that it be dealt with separately and systematically. The Dempster Building is not the only building that receives serious complaints. The city will have minimal positive impact if they jeopardize the creation of thirty-three new units of affordable housing, instead of approving them and coming up with system-wide regulations to give the city the leverage it needs around complaints. People ask what the hurry is. Connections for the Homeless works with people every day who make the need for hurry very clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to return to the one person who did not respond to being called on, is Taft West in the Zoom at this time? Seeing not, that concludes public comment for this evening, and we move now to the consent agenda. There are two items that I am removing from the consent agenda. One is P one, which was held in committee and will not be eligible for a vote this evening. The other is P two, which is, was amended in committee, and as is our practice, I would like to have it removed from the consent agenda, simply for the purposes of transparency, so that the amendment can be described, at least. Are there other items besides items P one and P two that members would like to see removed from the consent agenda? H S one? Are there any additional items people would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Surprisingly, P three and P four. So at this time, just to catch everyone up, the items that have been pulled from the consent agenda are A two, P one, P two, P three, and P four, and H S one. Are there further items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda before we proceed?
Yes. I would like to remove item A twelve.
A twelve. Last call for additional removals from the consent agenda besides items A two, A twelve, P one, P two, P three, P four, and H S one. Getting a lot of, like, looking through agenda body language. Any? Okay, I think, all right, I would entertain a motion in that case.
I will move the consent agenda minus items A twelve, P one, P two, P three, and P four, and H S one.
And A two.
A two.
I'm sorry, and A two.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the whole consent agenda except for the following six items: A two, A twelve, P one, P two, P three, P four, H S one. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sepredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda, except for the six items previously read, is passed. This brings us to item A two. Would someone care to make a motion on item A two?
I'll move item A two, the Amazon, or I'm sorry, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of BMO Harris credit card activity. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sepredin?
Abstain.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. With six voting in favor and none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and item A two is passed. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item A twelve?
Yes, I will move item A twelve, which is ordinance sixty-three oh, oh twenty-three, amending the city code section three dash four dash six, item, or line P two, to allow the limited service of wine and craft cocktails at craft breweries.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance sixty-three dash oh dash twenty-three. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I will be quick with this. I just want us to, you know, I've showed the image a number of times, I'm not going to show it today, but there are plenty of studies that demonstrate the societal harm that alcohol causes. In fact, when you look at the list of controlled substances, alcohol is typically at the top of the list when you factor in the harm to oneself and the harm to others in combination. And so, as we're moving forward with allowing this, I am going to support this, but I think we need to keep that in mind as we consider the way we deal with a number of controlled substances, and we understand that by regulating alcohol, creating spaces, you know, that are safe for consumption, we are potentially doing more good than by leaving alcohol in an unregulated state where we don't have safe spaces for consumption. And I think we need to think about this across the board, and particularly, you know, folks who read the roundtable, there were a number of articles recently about fentanyl, and of course, no one's, well, actually, fentanyl is legal, certain, when prescribed, but no one's pushing to, you know, completely legalize fentanyl, but there are regulations that we put in place to ensure that use is safe, and I think we need to think about that as we have done with alcohol, with a number of controlled substances, and hopefully, we can make our community safer by doing that. But I will note that there's no one here at public comment saying that by adding more drinking locations, we're going to have more accidents in our community, or that, you know, more life or limb will be at risk, which, in reality, is, is, is a truth, a true risk. So, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sepredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance sixty-three dash oh dash twenty-three is passed for introduction. It will be back on the agenda in two weeks for action. This brings us now to the planning and development section of the agenda. We skip over item P one, which was held in committee, and we move now to item P two, which was amended in committee. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I move item P two, which is ordinances sixty-eight dash oh dash twenty-three, and sixty-nine dash oh dash twenty-three, amending Title Six of the city code with an omnibus text amendment package to provide clarifications and updates to the zoning ordinance.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of ordinances sixty-eight dash oh dash twenty-three and sixty-nine dash oh dash twenty-three as amended. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Reed, just ask, since you made the amendment, and you'll be speaking first, if you could include an explanation of the amendment in your comments, please.
And just...
Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
To save a little bit of time, I have emailed to the council just now, copied to the city manager and staff, the amendment, as I understand it, that we passed in committee. So that should be in front of everybody momentarily.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mayor. So yes, the amendment was to set the radius for a transit-oriented, oriented development area to a half-mile radius around a train station. And so, that would be the new definition for transit-oriented development, transit-oriented development areas. And I want to note that it was shared with me that Chicago previously had an ordinance whereas a half-mile, and my understanding is that they have expanded that to a mile radius, and they have also included bus stops as a part of that. I'm not proposing that necessarily now, because I would be supportive. If there's support up here for it, I will pass it now, but... You shouldn't have given a, I'm going to go ahead and make an attempt. I think it makes sense to add in bus stops, but we'll save that, we'll look into that over the next few weeks. But certainly, I think this is a great first step, which is increasing this to a half-mile radius around train stations. This will help potentially, over, you know, the course of this ordinance, add, who knows, hundreds of new affordable housing units near train stations, and will help us achieve our affordable housing goals. So, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sepredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. With eight voting in favor and none voting against, ordinancees sixty-three and sixty-nine dash oh dash twenty-three, as amended in committee, are passed for introduction, and will be back on our agenda for action in two weeks. This brings us to item P three. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion on item P three?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item P three, Resolution twenty-two R twenty-three, approving a plat of subdivision for eighteen oh one to eighteen fifteen Church Street and seventeen oh eight to seventeen Tandaro Avenue for the Mount Pisgah subdivision.
Second.
Second, and maybe is it possible combined, P three and P four?
Councilmember Nusma would be standing there.
I'd be happy to make that motion, but I think this might, I want to take the temperature of other members of the council before putting these together.
Well, this time, we'll honor the motion you made, and if you want to change it before the vote, that's your role within your rights to make a substitute motion. At this time, Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution twenty-two dash R dash twenty-three, and I believe Councilmember Harris was the first to second it. Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, just really wanted to hear from, you know, Councilmember Nguyen. I supported a hold at the last meeting out of respect for Councilmember Nguyen's absent, absence, and so, you know, we had some, some discussions offline. I'd love to know just where we are. I think bottom line, obviously, is, is the security that can be provided at claret for the next, and that's where you pick, pick up from there, so.
I believe it's through Thanksgiving.
Okay. Yeah, and Richard Koenig, are you still with us, or did he leave? Is he out there? Okay, there we go. So my understanding is he is in support of that, he's committed to doing that, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Yes, Richard Koenig, Executive Director, Housing Opportunity Development Corporation. Thank you for considering this motion. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to move the Mount Pisgah project forward. We agree that we've been working on trying to improve the situation at three nineteen Dempster. We've been working hard to try and improve tenants' lives that are there, and do agree that we could extend the security that's on site for that property for the next, for the next four months, or a total of six months, to provide that additional security on site.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Kelly.
I just wanted to clarify that item P three is just a property subdivision, separate, perhaps, discussion for item P four.
I mean, we need to move all of this today, so it's the same discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
That's all I have for now.
Mr. Cummings?
P three, in some ways, can't actually happen until P four is passed. Couldn't subdivide the property until it's sold.
Councilmember Kelly?
Well, I want to understand what we're doing. Are we going to move? Are we going to move to P 4 first now, so I know which one I'm addressing?
Maybe we can...
Well, I guess I would say, we, I can't, I can't sign an ordinance in the middle of a council meeting, so one way or the other, the vote on P 3 would occur before P 4 is enacted into law. So, I don't know that the order that we act tonight matters. You certainly have my commitment that I won't sign the one until the other is passed as well. But if folks are comfortable switching the order, that's fine, too.
So, are we switching the order? I don't know. Are you taking a...
Chair, I want to ask if Councilmember Kelly can just say what she has. It's going to be the same, no matter...
No, it's not the same, because in one case, it requires a supermajority vote to give away to someone.
I mean, your comments will change.
We'll change the order if some, I don't feel it's necessary, I'm not going to ask for it, but I certainly would respect it if someone else makes a substitute motion or whatever else. Whatever y'all want is fine, from an order standpoint.
Okay. If no one minds the order, then I'll just continue. Right, so what the neighbors, what the tenants, what we've requested, and what H O D C has finally come forward with at the 11th hour, is far short of what we've requested. We've requested, in order to break the trend, the setting, the situation where tenants and neighbors live both in unsafe setting and in fear frequently, that there be round-the-clock security. We asked for three months, we asked for ongoing security after that with, or supervision, with some sort of metrics whereby the tenants, as well as the neighbors, are surveyed to demonstrate that improvement, that the property has improved. And I want to be really crystal clear on this. This is not about affordable housing or not. We all support affordable housing, absolutely, but we also have to care about the very residents, the existing low-income residents in this city. We have to care about their safety and their well-being, and that has to be first and foremost in our minds. And when we vote on this, we have to decide, are we going to take this opportunity to ensure that that, building that entity that's been run so poorly for so long, we have an opportunity now to leverage some pressure to say, no, you need to take this further. Even the eight hours has helped maybe a little bit, but it hasn't resolved the issues. I think you've heard from residents this evening. So, no, it's not enough what H O D has come forward now, suddenly with saying, you know... And also, by the way, the city's going to, the proposal includes the city paying also for part of that, to continue paying through, for eight hours a day until Thanksgiving. So, no, this is not enough. It is up to us, it is incumbent on us to be, exercise due diligence, to do whatever we can to ensure a safer environment at 319 and for the surrounding neighbors. So, I cannot support this. I'd like to move to have this tabled until August 18th. I believe, I know that we can do better with H O D C. I know H O D C can come through with a stronger, with stronger measures, such as those that we have requested, that we requested over a week ago. We need to break the trends that have been going on there with drug dealing and everything else that you've heard about, and what is being offered right now falls way short. So, I'd like to move to have this tabled until our August 28th meeting. This started under the last council term. This has been going on for years. We can use this opportunity to make improvements at 319 Dempster. We owe this to those tenants in that building more than to anybody else. These are low-income residents who live in fear, most of them in that building. This is our opportunity to show that we stand by the people, by those low-income people, not just by more affordable units without actually caring about those human beings. This is our moment. I ask that we table this until the August 28th council meeting.
Is there a motion?
That's a motion.
Councilmember Kelly moves that this item be tabled until the August City Council meeting. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Kelly, you still have the floor.
Um, thank you. That's, I think that's all I have to say. I'm disappointed that, that my fellow council members don't want to take this opportunity to ensure that we use this moment to really, that eight hours a day is simply not doing the trick, and that's why residents and tenants and myself and Councilmember Nguyen wrote to Richard Koenig and Chairman Sholton to insist on round-the-clock security. We asked for three months, but we're getting nothing in terms of round-the-clock. We're getting eight hours a day with the city paying for it until Thanksgiving. Not enough. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on item P 3?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Severdin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. With six voting in favor and two voting against, Resolution 22-R23 is approved. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion on item P 4?
Mr. Mayor, I move item P 4, Ordinance 51-0-23, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property at 1805 Church Street, 1708 Darrow Avenue, and 1710 Darrow Avenue.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of ordinance 51-0-23. Councilmember Burns, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Kelly?
Again, I'm going to ask that this be tabled until our August 28th meeting, so that we may improve the conditions at 319 Dempster for the tenants and for the neighbors. What's been offered is not going to make a huge difference, and we're going to continue. This has been going on for too many years. I'd like to move that this be tabled until the August meeting.
Councilmember Kelly moves that this item be tabled to the August meeting of the City Council. Is there a second to that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Reed still have the floor.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you. This is just a point of order. This ordinance pertains to the sale of property, so it requires a six-vote majority? That's a question?
Yes, this requires two-thirds of all members elected irrespective of attendance this evening. That means two-thirds of nine must vote yes, which means six people must vote yes.
Six yes votes tonight.
Correct. So, five, five yeses and three abstentions would be a failure.
Right. And if we don't have six votes tonight, and we take a vote, this motion would fail, the ordinance would fail, and it would die.
That's my understanding. Mr. Cummings, would you care to weigh in?
I would love more time to research Robert's rules on what happens when you actually have a two-thirds vote requirement and you only get five. But nevertheless, I would agree with the mayor that it does, since the motion does not carry according to City Council rules, that it would in fact fail and die.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to passing this. I will vote in favor of it tonight. I'm concerned, though, if we don't have six votes on the dais, that voting tonight would be counterproductive. So, I'm not sure where to go with that, not knowing how else everyone else is going to go.
Table.
I'd like to do it tonight if we got the six votes.
Well, I can't, I'm not a mind reader, but I'll just say the previous motion passed six, too.
Okay. Enough said.
No one else is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four and a half minutes left.
I don't think, do I have my live on? Oh, I was going to say to Councilmember Newsma that we could table this. Or if you want to table it till our next July meeting, I'm willing to amend, to, you know, move a tabling of this for two weeks in a very serious effort to gain more safety measures for the residents at 319 Dempster. Councilmember Newsma, is that, would you be willing to entertain tabling it then for two weeks?
No.
I know, because you're fearful that it might fail otherwise. Okay.
Councilmember Harris?
So, I had a question for our council. It was brought up about the lawsuit. Would that change anything?
I was today years old when I found out about that lawsuit, so I didn't hear, we haven't been served. I talked to Mr. Keating about it. He hasn't been served, seriously unaware. I talked to the deputy city attorney. We have no knowledge of this lawsuit. My guess, if it wasn't an injunctive case, if it was an injunction, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be allowed to vote tonight.
Okay.
But that's my, my guess is that it wasn't.
Okay. That just stood out to me. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on item P 4?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Severdin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. With six voting in favor and two voting against, ordinance 51-0-23 is passed. This brings us to item HS 1. Would someone care to make a motion on item HS 1?
I will move item HS 1. Ordinance 2-0-23, amending the City Code, creating Title 12, Consumer Protections, Chapter 1, Cashless Establishments Prohibited.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 2-0-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris.
Thank you. So, this was discussed here at this body a while ago, and in fact, the reason it's for action today is because we, I believe, voted initially unanimously to move it forward, and then it was tabled. And I think that the act of tabling, Luke, can you help me share this around what I just sent?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And what I, my apologies, I'm getting back to my notes here. And I appreciate the opportunity that we've had to workshop this more. So, to walk through the steps, as I said, it appeared here, this went to the Economic Development Committee, it went to the Equity and Empowerment Commission. We had a town hall or a meeting where we met with business owners. There was a survey that was issued to business owners, and we got a lot of good feedback. And I think a lot of that feedback is incorporated here, or very shortly will be incorporated here. And so, for example, you know, if you look at the additional information from the Economic Development Committee, you see that, you know, there are a number of states and municipalities who have implemented this. You'll see that the ban typically applies to retail, restaurant, and service businesses, and Massachusetts has a statewide ban on cashless businesses. You see that typical exemptions include denominations over $20, over $20, and exceptions for reservations, deposits, and mobile app purchases. Certainly, that is included in this ordinance. You see that there are caps for cash transactions that are between, in some cases, over $500, in other cases, over $5,000. But, so there are transaction caps. There's an allowance for reverse ATMs, and other municipalities have done other things that are really important. I think it's also important to note some of the determinations by the Equity and Empowerment Commission, who made a number of notes about the importance of this and why we need as a council to make sure that we are looking out for the 4.5 percent, nationally, we know that number, 4.5 percent of residents in the United States are unbanked. We know that that, there's a large disparity between folks who are unbanked and Caucasian, and folks who are unbanked and people of color. We see that number jump quite a bit when we look at the black community and the Hispanic community, and we see that number jump when we look at young folks. So, I think this committee, this council, when we voted on this initially unanimously, understood that there is a need to do this. The Equity and Empowerment Commission understood that there is a need to do this. I think even the Economic Development Committee understands that there is a need to do something here. And so, I have sent forward a few amendments to this that I think will help folks, help this, help folks get to yes. Right, that's, and so, one is lowering of the fine. The fine amount was taken from other ordinances, and I think the fine may have been excessive. And so, I've put forward an amendment that will lower that fine to $100. It'll lower it quite a bit, from $1,000 to $100 for the first offense, and then from $1,500 for each subsequent offense, to only $150 for each subsequent offense. That is an extremely low fine, but I think that can help make this more palatable for folks. We've also, I've also put forward an amendment that would change the definition, right? What was universally agreed upon is that the most important industries are industries that, you know, grocery stores. Grocery stores were critical to this, while the grocery stores that exist now in Evanston almost exclusively, entirely accept cash, there are a number of business models that are coming down that, you know, from Amazon Go and others that do not accept cash. And quite often, in New York, in places that have these cashless bans in place, they follow the ordinance, which is creating an alternative through these reverse ATMs. Also, my amendment would say that these, is that my time?
I'm afraid so.
Okay, well, I will wrap up here, and then I'll make the amendment. This also would, for businesses that are 24 hours, such as a 7-Eleven or other business that chooses not to accept cash, they would be able to not accept cash between, if they accepted cash during the day, they would be able to not accept cash between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and still not have to purchase one of those reverse ATMs as long as they accepted cash during the day. And so, those are amendments. I move those amendments as one.
Councilmember Reed moves to amend ordinance 2-0-23 as described verbally, but also, there's a document that's just been emailed to us that, just help me here as a consumer of this document, but also someone guiding the discussion.
Yes.
Does this document replace the ordinance that's in the packet?
No, no, it does not replace, it replaces the sections that it's, so it would eliminate the definition of consumer commodity, it would replace the retail, or the food store definition with a grocery store definition, it would replace the retail establishment definition with a pharmaceutical establishment.
Okay, okay. So, I now think I understand what's going on here. And sorry, just because maybe, you know, in the spirit of there are no dumb questions, because if one person has a question, others maybe do too. The difference between the packet definition of food store and the amendment definition of grocery store is the and personal care items, so that you don't, this doesn't apply to you unless you do affirmatively sell personal care items in a different degree?
Right, and that, yeah, that's what my intention was to say, you have to sell all three of those in order for it to apply to you. So, it wouldn't apply to McDonald's, for example.
A bit hypothetical. Okay, so Councilmember Reed moves to amend ordinance 2-0-23 as laid out in the document that's been distributed. Is there a second to that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. The next speaker is Councilmember Harris, followed by Kelly.
Thank you so much for the floor, Chair, Mayor. So, when we visited Colorado, we went on a town gown, and they actually, at the airport, had the machines that you could use to make cash and the credit, and I want us to further look into that. I've been, Second Ward businesses have been reaching out to me. I agree with the intent and what we're trying to do. I wholeheartedly agree with it, but I think there can be other remedies to the problem that we're trying to solve without disenfranchising everyone at some point in some junction. So, I did bring that information back, and I will share that with the city manager once I relocate it, but there was information on how to do that and who's responsible for those machines. Is that city paying for that? Is that businesses? Is that a joint venture? I think there's some opportunities to look at it, so I just wanted to state that.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Yes, I agree. Absolutely must address the discriminatory impact of those who are unbanked not being able to purchase. I don't think this is not the way to do it, however. I think we're finding that... I think we're finding that there are issues both in New Jersey and New York where they've done this. We're now advancing to places where, as Councilmember Harris stated, the cash-to-card opportunities are becoming much more prevalent right now, and I think we absolutely, I started to look into this with one company, I think it's, I can't remember the name of it right now, but they even suggested that they would be interested in looking at reduced fees for cities in the name of equity to be able to provide these cash-to-card kiosks where there would be no fees for, you know, charged to the users. Of course, the city would pay for these, to have a few of these, but they, you know, said they would consider looking and reduce, reduce costs for these. So I'd like us to look at that. There's also, like, local currency. There's many other ways to go about this that won't inflict sort of the harm we're also hearing about from some of our small businesses. So yes, I agree, we must do something about it. I don't think this is that something, however. And I think with a little more research, we can, we can find a more appropriate way of addressing this important discriminatory impact that I agree that we should address. Thank you.
At this time, no one who hasn't spoken before, or for that matter, no one who has time left, has a light on, so let me just call in Councilmember Reed with the request that you'd be very, very brief and perhaps needy for the comments.
Yes, yes. I, I, I hear those concerns that folks, everyone up here is acknowledging that there's a problem, but, you know, the solution alone is not just providing a few kiosks that the city pays for. There are people who are, we need a solution immediately, and we need a solution that does, that ensures that folks have access across the border, whether they want to use or are able to use debit cards or not. And I would ask us, particularly with the amendments that I put forward that did not go on a second, what businesses are folks saying would be impacted by this negatively in your wards that are complaining to you? So I mean, if we're talking about grocery stores and pharmacies ensuring that they accept cash between the hours during the day, I don't think that's a huge burden, particularly as we're seeing more cashless, even grocery stores proliferate. We do not have an Amazon Go here yet, but by having this in place, we can ensure that if these large, new models come to our town, that there be an ordinance in place that protects consumers. There are folks who choose to go unbanked, there are folks who do not have access to banking for a host of reasons. I don't think this council is ready to make a large investment in, you know, providing these pay stations throughout the city.
Councilmember?
So I will, with that, I would ask that either we, you know, we table this a bit further out to allow for that actual discussion about getting these cashless machines, and if we, for some reason, determine that the city cannot get the cashless machines at an adequate level to provide them in the community, then we need to revisit this. But I would ask that we table this until after our budget season, so until our first meeting in January.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves this item be tabled to the first meeting in January 2024. Very high number. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role on the motion to table this for half a year?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
No. Councilmember Sufferton says no for the record.
With five voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, and this item will appear on the first City Council agenda of 2024. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I just want to send out some congratulatory statements. So Saturday was the recycle event at ETHS, as city manager said, and they did a great job. I was very impressed, and Kevin Johnson's name kept coming up. He was here earlier, and I wanted to send a shout out to him. And William Reed, class of '87, my class, of course. I also wanted to say thank you to the Public Works team. One of my residents had a dangerous tree, and they were headed home for the evening and came back on fowler last week. Third, we're going bagless, and I worked with my commissioner, our commissioner, Josina Marita, and she's given me 120 bags. I can possibly get more. Most people left for the day. These are insulated, so I did bring bags, as I mentioned, at my Second Ward meeting for everybody here if they need them, and also for Second Ward residents. And then a big thank you for Fourth of July, Second Ward Council meeting for July has been postponed until August. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn.
Yes, Third Ward office hours are this Thursday from 7:30 to 9:30 at Brothers K. at Hitman in Maine. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off by addressing Mr. Bouchard, who made the point in public comment that redistricting is now in place, and just want to clarify that the new ward boundaries do not take effect until the next election. So we are and will remain in our current wards with the current ward boundaries until April of 2025. There is no guarantee I will be on the council in May of 2025. So if I should happen to decide to run again and should happen to get elected, thank you in advance for your welcome, but it is premature at this point. I want to just do a shout out to staff. Mike Rivera, very minor kind of issue, but Mike Rivera came up with a brilliant solution to a problem involving a parking space and relocating some mailboxes on Davis Street. We don't publicly praise staff enough for doing that kind of thing on a regular basis. So without going into more detail, thank you, staff. And then number three, Fourth Ward meeting tomorrow at 7:00.
Councilmember Burns.
Just wanted to take the time to thank Councilmember Winn for, in the spirit of what Councilmember Reed always says, finding way to get to yes on P4 and P3. I appreciate it, and I know the community does as well. I also want to acknowledge people that came out to discuss the HODC proposal on all sides, including the residents at Claridge, who expressed their concerns throughout the process. I want to reiterate this because it's really important to me, because I consider myself responsive and very engaged in Evanston. I grew up here, I care about this town. You know, I went to Claridge Apartments, toured it with Richard Koenig. I made an amendment based on concerns that Councilmember Kelly expressed to require them to enter into an improvement plan, and on and on. So I just, I want people to, I want to reiterate that I do care, I listen, I love this town, I grew up here, and I want to make sure that everybody is, lives in a place that is welcoming and that's not disruptive, that's incredibly important to me. And I think anybody in the Fifth Ward that has reached out to me about similar concerns would agree that I have taken them seriously, and I will continue to. We will have other opportunities to check in about HODC. They're not going anywhere. They're a nonprofit that owns and manages several properties, not even, not just in the Fifth Ward, but across the city. And so we'll have check-in points to make sure that things are going as they should at Claridge Apartments. And feel free, even beyond this vote, to continue to use me as a resource, not going anywhere. Also want to thank city staff and everyone else that has really worked to move that forward. On the 17th of this month, we're starting a, kicking off a youth shoemaking workshop. This is something that I partnered with our Parks and Rec Department to do, as well as digital youth network, which is an initiative in Evanston howned by Nicole Pinkert at Northwestern. We are, we have selected 10 high school students from Evanston Township High School that are going to participate in a program that teaches them traditional shoemaking techniques. They'll customize a pair of Air Force Ones, and then they'll come up with their own shoe collection over the next few months, this summer. And then all of that will culminate with a showcase that we're going to invite everyone up here to attend, as well as their family and friends. So I appreciate everyone that has supported that project, and we're excited about launching that on the 17th. And then for anybody that lives in the Hill Arts District, either lives or has a business in the Hill Arts area, which is a community near, neighborhood near Double Clutch, Soul and Smoke, Jennifer Edibles, et cetera, we are having a virtual Hill Arts District meeting tomorrow where we're going to discuss parking congestion issues and, at a meeting, and we're inviting our consultant, WGI, who's working with us on this. So if you can attend, please come out. The information is on the city, city's calendar. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton. Councilmember Revelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let everyone know that the recording of my January 27th, June 27th meeting here at the Civic Center about, with some participants from Northwestern presenting information and responding to some, I thought, some tough questions from my residents, that recording is on the website, the city's website. All the documents from Northwestern related to the proposed stadium project and the zoning amendment are on the proposed projects webpage. There is a lot there. Northwestern has now submitted its third batch of documents, so there's, there's a lot to read there. And in the spirit of praising our staff, I'd just like to give a shout out to our community development staff who have had to digest all that information, get it posted on the website, and respond to lots of questions from residents. So they're doing a great job.
Councilmember Reed.
We will be having our next Eighth Ward Ward meeting this, on the last Thursday of the month, which is the 27th at 6:00 p.m. We will be back at the Levy Senior Center, and guests have not been determined yet, but we'll have some interesting folks and invite you out. And I want to thank Allison Lepzinger and Nick Cummings, or Council Cummings, as well as Cara Pratt and the team for attending our last meeting. We had a really robust discussion and looking forward to the next. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and the establishment of reserves or settlement of claims. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1, C2, C11, and C12.
Councilmember Nusma moves the city convene, the council convenes into an executive session to discuss the items just enumerated. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:20 p.m., the City Council moves into an executive session to begin immediately in the councilmember library. Thanks, everybody.